Another overflowed crowd tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2016. At this time, we ask you to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple sets of minutes that we're not quite ready to approve yet, so we're going to table those two tonight and move right on to approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 15A-17 in the amount of $76,474.64 is payroll. Warrant 15B-17 in the amount of $43,345.61 and warrant 15C-17 in the amount of $4,662. Both accounts payable be approved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. Correspondents?
We have no correspondence.
We have no correspondence. Announcements. You'll start on the back page and work to the front. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You may call (508) 669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station at (508) 669-6711 for more information. The Fall Town Meeting will be held Thursday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School. The warrant has been posted to the local post offices, the main fire station, town hall, and on the Town of Dayton website. The Food Bank Distribution will take place this Saturday, October 15th, from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. Dayton Lions Arts Festival will be held at Arujo's Farm on November 6th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one quick announcement, if it's okay?
For what?
Thank you. The presentation concerning the police station has, in fact, been uploaded in its entirety to the Town of Dayton YouTube account, so you can type in "Town of Dayton Meetings" into YouTube and you can search through the videos. It will be the first one there. It is the most recent, so you can feel free to watch that video in its entirety before you come to the special town meeting on October 27th. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
You're welcome.
I will continue with announcements for the early voting schedule for the Town of Dayton. Again, early voting will be held in the Town of Dayton as mandated by the State of Massachusetts the weeks of October 24th and the week of October 31st for the upcoming November 8th, 2016 state election. The voting will take place at Dayton Town Hall, Upper Level, 979 Somerset Ave., Dayton, Mass. on the following days. Monday, October 24th, Tuesday, October 25th, 7:30 to 4:30. October 26th, 7:30 to 8:00 PM. And Thursday, October 27th, 7:30 to 4:30. In the following week, Monday, Tuesday, October 31st and November 1st, from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Wednesday, November 2nd, 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM. And Thursday, November 3rd, 2016, from 7:30 to 4:30. Again, the week of October 24th, Monday through Thursday, and the week of October 31st, Monday through Thursday. So, those who want to give this new early voting a shot, please feel free to come. Town Hall. We have an announcement regarding the municipal modernization law speed limit changes. Mrs. Gula, would you like to read that?
One of the provisions of the newly enacted municipal modernization law gives authority to local communities to reduce speed limits and establish safety zones on local streets. This provision does not apply to state highways. The town has begun the process of identifying streets or sections of streets that should be considered for speed limit changes. From that list of streets, the town will also determine if safety zones are needed in specific areas. The Board of Selectmen, Highway Superintendent, and Police Chief will prioritize the list based on all data available. Mass DOT will be notified of our planned changes. We've already sent a letter to Mass DOT advising them that we would like them to consider looking into changing the speed limit on Route 138 from the Taunton Line to Hart Street because of the number of businesses that have been created since they set those speed limits, probably at least 40 years ago.
Thank you, Nancy. Town Clerk, at this time, she did receive a couple little gifts today from Arm and Products, which for most of us in town know it as the former Advance Loose Leaf Company, right down the road on 138 next to the power plant, for making the Town Clerk's new voter's election books. He's a beautiful display of books for her to keep all her election materials in, and we'd like to reach out and thank Arm and Products very much. Thank you. All business.
No all business.
New business. Review Discuss an Act on a Road Opening Permit for the Columbia Gas Company at 180 Cobb's Lane, Dayton, for an end cap transition/remediation. I'll read this. This is the same, most of their road cuts. Whenever possible, pipes are to be jetted under the roadway. Any unsuitable material will be replaced with gravel and two layers of two-inch compacted asphalt for a total of four inches of asphalt. All gravel to be compacted in 12-inch layers. The road is to be placed back in the same or better condition as when the project was started. This is a policy that Columbia Gas follows for all their road cuts. And most important is, the Highway Superintendent must always be notified within 72 hours of work. So, I'll entertain a motion for a road cut by Columbia Gas at 180 Cobb's Lane.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. Next, under New Business, Review Discuss an Act on a Workman's Compensation Waiver for Gregory Mendez for the snow plow season 2016-2017. It's that time of year again when Superintendent Ferry starts to line up all his outside plow drivers and equipment that he signs on to take care of the roads here in Dayton. And this is the first one to date, and it reads, "To whom it may concern?" That would be us. "My name is Gregory Mendez, and I am requesting a waiver on workman's comp to allow me to plow for the Town of Dayton as an owner-operator." And again, thank you, Gregory Mendez. So, I will entertain a motion to grant the waiver of workman's compensation insurance to Mr. Gregory Mendez for the snow plow season.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries.
Have we heard from Mr. Ferry yet about rates that will be in effect?
Not yet. They should be coming quick, though. Busy night with passports. Next, under New Business, Review Discuss an Act on the yearly review and approval of the Town of Dayton's sexual harassment policy. As we do every year, we review and we approve the Town of Dayton Sexual Harassment Policy, which is mandatory for all new employees of the town to sign and acknowledge that they have received a copy of it. We urge our department heads to make a copy available to all their employees and their department members for them just to review at the same time. So, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the Town of Dayton's Sexual Harassment Policy for another year.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Next on the agenda, Review Discuss an Act on a One-Day Lick License and the Waiver of the License Fee for the Dayton Lions Club and their Annual Arts Festival on November 6th, 2016 at Arujo's Farm. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. Commissioner General Aguirre did inform me that he will be inspecting the premises before, I believe, the day before the event, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving right along here. Last, under New Business, to Review Discuss an Act on an Appointment of Mr. David Eckerson to the Land Use Committee. We have a volunteer application for Mr. David Eckerson of North Dayton, who has shown great interest in being a member of our Land Use Committee. Matter of fact, they had their first meeting tonight, and what they will be doing is planning and reviewing and looking over all town-owned lands and parcels that the town may be interested in putting up for auction. And after, I don't know how many meetings, maybe a couple months' worth, we'll give you an update on where they stand and which parcels they'll actually put down on paper and invite the public to look at and perhaps own a piece of some more land in Dayton. At this time, I will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. David Eckerson to the Land Use Committee.
Moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Mr. Eckerson. I asked my colleagues if they have any reports I'd like to go over.
I attended the MMA Meeting Committee on Energy and the Environment, and the new roster of committee members has been announced. So, just to give you an idea of who makes up the committee that I serve on, there are three mayors: Kimberly Driscoll, Salem; Ken Gray from Amesbury; and Mark Hawke from Gardner; Selectman Julie Carpenter from Brimfield; Kevin McCarthy from Cohasset; and me. Counselors: Emily Norton from Newton; Margaret LaFores from Quincy. Managers: Charles Blanchard from Palmer; and Robin Craver, who is our chairperson, from Charlton. Presidential appointees: John Gregorio Copelman and Page; Susan Bonnell Wilbraham Selectman; Robert Cantoretti, Director of Public Works from Franklin. Technical appointments: Robert Guber Weston and Sampson; Alan Cathcart, represents the Town of Concord and the MWWA; Bradford Swin, Boston Director of Energy Policy; John Drobinski, Environmental Resources Management. Interesting thing was, for the first time ever, I've actually been appointed to serve multiple years. They're usually one-year appointments, but I was appointed through 2018, as was Robin Craver from Charlton, and Mark Hawke, the mayor from Gardner. And then we have, the others are, 2017, Ken Gray, Mayor from Amesbury; Kevin McCarthy, Selectman from Cohasset; Margaret LaFores, the counselor, from Quincy; and the town manager, Charles Blanchard, from Palmer. All the rest of 2016 appointments. The agenda today was, the presentation was by Mike Judge from the Department of Energy Resources, and Mike talked about the changes in net metering, the Department of Energy Resources, the new solar incentive program. They talked about water infrastructure and the legislation and the discussion that's taken place at the state level regarding the climate change executive order. The solar incentive program, it was a lengthy presentation, and I intend to go back and look at it online again because there was just so much to absorb. But the presentation was on the draft solar incentive program. That would replace the state's expiring SREC II program. The new proposal is a tariff program where tariffs would be sent to the Department of Energy, and the methodology would be approved by the Department of Public Utilities. The purpose of the tariff is to benefit people who do not have solar power on their homes or if there is solar power in the town and the energy is actually going somewhere else. So, they're going to try to help the homeowners with some kind of a, I'll call it a price We also went, reviewed a proposed legislation. Our committee is submitting legislation. This will deal with best practice recommendations for stormwater, public awareness, and public education. And rest assured, folks, you're going to hear about stormwater all year. This is never going to go away. It just becomes more annoying and expensive. We will also have, we also voted to send to the MMA Board for consideration a bill that deals with municipal energy plans, and the last one was Sustainable Water Resource Funds. So, these are just some of the things that would be coming out of the proposals that we have made. These proposals will go before the Legislative Committee, and then if it, they may tweak the wording a little bit, and if they approve of these bills, these will go to the Executive Board for a final vote, and then at the annual meeting, they will appear in the booklet what the proposed legislation will be. And at the annual meeting, the attendees will vote, and then they will be submitted to the legislature to get them, start them through the process. The one that I mentioned about the solar, it's an MMA bill that would assist municipal and district rate payers. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do something along those lines. One of these bills was submitted last year, and it made it as far as the House. And then, from what I could determine from the discussion, they didn't find anything wrong with the bill, but there was a lot of external pressure by environmental groups, so it didn't go anywhere, and it didn't make the Senate. But they're going to be refiled again, assuming they're voted and approved at the annual meeting in January. So, going forward, they passed out the scheduled meetings, and once again, there will be the legislative event at the Omni Parker House in March. That's the one that, last year, Cahill O'Brien went to that meeting with me. Because that one deals with water infrastructure. That was everything we covered. As I say, the presentation from Cobb and Energy Resources took up most of the meeting, and I'll go back through that one again.
Another committee.
Well, not only that. One of the best practices at the state level, they're looking for representation from different parts of the state. And our chairperson happens to be on a, I'll call it a consortium of communities out in the central part of the state to work on stormwater best practices. I told her I would be willing to help out for Southeast Mass. I got to find out. She said there is a consortium down here. I don't know who it is, because at first I said to her, "Is it Serpent?", and she said, "Yes." Then she said, "No." So, I'm going to, then she said it was a buyer's group, and I didn't understand that either, because we don't need a buyer's group. We've got comp buys now. So, I'm going to get in touch with probably some of the, some of the other selectmen that I meet up periodically and see, does anyone know anything about either a stormwater coalition or if there is some other kind of group. One of the women on that committee comes from Wilbraham, and she wasn't aware of anything out her way. So, it seems to be clustered in the Worcester County area or maybe Middlesex County, but the other parts of the state, I would think, would have reps coming out. They said there was one in the Pioneer Valley, which is, I mean, that's way, way out, so we'll see.
Ms. Obrath, do you have anything?
I do have a little something. So, I was fortunate enough to attend Senator Mark Pacico's Economic Advisory Council Forum, which was pertaining to rail transportation and the need for it in the South Coast region. There were public officials from Easton, Berkeley, Taunton, Middleborough. There were representatives from Serpent. There were many local business leaders, and the special guest was former Governor Michael Dukakis. He was also the 1988 Democratic presidential nominee. It was a very well-attended forum, and it was nice to hear leaders coming together in the South Coast region to discuss the need for rail transportation. And it was nice to hear former Governor Dukakis advocating for South Coast rail as well. So, it was great. It was fabulous.
Very good. Very good.
Did they get into the roots?
They did. And, oh, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have said that. That was the whole point of the meeting. They were specifically advocating for the Stoughton route, and they were speaking out against the new Middleborough option proposed by Mass DOT. And as everybody knows who have been watching our selectmen meetings, we recently unanimously voted as a board to approve the Stoughton option, which was the original option, which was already set to go.
Did anyone speak against Stoughton?
No.
I'm surprised, because you said Easton was there, and they've been in the paper. Easton and Rainham have been the most vocal opponents, but.
Well, so, the public official who was representing Easton is currently running for election, so. And they happen to represent Easton and Taunton, so I think it's a fine, fine line, because Taunton obviously wants the Stoughton option. Easton is okay with the new Middleborough option, so.
He's a politician.
Yeah. But it was very nice, and it was good to see everybody rallying around the common cause and the need for the Stoughton option.
Mm-hmm.
Moving right on, acknowledgements. We have an anonymous donation in the amount of $28 made to the Council on Agent on October 5th. Entertain a motion to acknowledge this $28 donation.
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Well, there won't be anyone coming to the podium. Republican, what? Is there anything my colleagues would like to bring up or have anything they'd like to say? Our administrative assistant?
Thank you.
We did get an advisory from Mass DOT, and this relates to the plan to remove toll plazas from the Mass Pike. So, anyone who uses that road, they're going to begin demolition of all existing toll plazas on October 28th. They will be using all electronic tolling, so if you have a transponder, obviously, the gantry will read that and take the money out of whatever account you've designated. If you don't have the transponder, it will photo your license plate, and you'll get a bill. For anyone that is thinking about getting a transponder, they're free. The minimum that you put on it is $20, and you designate an account, like a checking account. And before all the money in it is used, they will withdraw an amount to bring the balance back to $20. You get monthly statements. Even if there's no activity, you'll get a statement saying there was no activity. You can get them, I'm trying to think. It used to be able to get them through the Natick, I think it was the Natick Plaza, but if you go online, I believe you can order one, and they do come in quite handy. They work in all the New England states, and New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey. I don't know, I don't know about further south, but wherever you are traveling, if you see an easy pass lane, the transponders do work, and it is, it really is convenient to not have to stop and pay the tolls or to have the right change or some of the. the right change, or some of the, some of the exits on the main turnpike, if you get off and try to get on, you've got to have the exact change, because there's nobody in the booth at times, and so the transponder is really good.
I'd like to just throw some, one comment out there. It's more for informational purposes. This is a rather relaxing night in the Board of Selectmen. And I just made a comment a little while ago that, geez, been a lot of people here tonight getting passports. For those of you who are listening and you are unaware, we provide a service here for passports, all the way from the application process right to sending them in if we have to. You can get your pictures taken here for the passport pictures. We currently have three young ladies who always full of smiles, even though they won't let you smile for a picture after your passport, because the state frowns on it. But they're here, there's always access to one of these young ladies who are certified to issue these passports. One happens to be our administrative assistant, Karen Brady. Another one is in the assessor's office, Valerie Wilson, and another one in the treasurer's office, Christina Franco. So, for those who don't know, you want one-stop shopping, you have friends, you have family, you go to parties, you meet people that are going to be traveling, and they need to renew a passport, or they have to get their first passport, send them up to Dyton Town Hall. And one stop, and you're all done. It's just as simple, you pay here, you fill out your applications, and bring some identification for yourself, and is there anything else I'm missing, Karen?
No, I think you covered it. We can answer any questions, anybody that's renewing, we can help you fill out the forms. We take care of the mailing for you.
So it's just a little added feature that, you know, we try to provide for the residents of our towns, also not to inundate our two people who are also notary publics, Karen Brady again, and Pam Waller. There's always one of them here to notarize, or have any documents, or paperwork, or court-issued papers that need to be notarized. For all you residents, it's free of charge. You come up and see one of the girls, and we offer that service also. So, we're quite a friendly little town hall, and there's a lot that we offer that I do know some of the people don't realize, especially that all these new people that are moving into town. So, you have any questions? Please feel free to call the Board of Selectmen's office at any time, and you might be surprised at what we really do offer.
A reminder, next Wednesday night is the Board of Health meeting at 6:30 prior to the Selectmen's meeting. If anybody has any items they would like to have discussed, or certainly you're welcome to attend, but the monthly Board of Health meeting, just a reminder, next Wednesday night at 6:30.
If there's nothing else, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that motion carries. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Good night, cable, and have a nice weekend coming up. Good night now.